It's 7:01, I'll call the meeting to order. And first, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim Pittman, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Right behind you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim Pittman. Just so everyone knows where we finished it on public. We called meeting order at 6:00, and this is the public session of our meeting. Dr. Jim is on the phone. He is attending remotely. He's recovering from some surgery, and he has to wait until flu season is over. So he'll be with us next month, hopefully. Agenda review.
For the Board of Mr. Chair, we have to follow 91A. And there are certain requirements when someone is attending remotely. So I just wanted to ask that we need to do that.
Jim Manning, are you alone right now?
Yes, I'm totally without my cat.
He is alone without his cat, he says.
And it's a public party.
Awesome. Thank you for the reminder.
And everyone can hear?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda review. I know Dr. Akalian has something to add, and Dr. Beth does. So, Dr. Akalian?
The request for a public hearing at the next meeting for Special Education Trust.
Okay, and that will go under Superintendent's Report as subsection B. So, Board Vote for Special Education Trust Fund Expenditure. And, Dr. Beth, you have a request?
The Ad-Hoc Communications Committee would like to make a report.
We'll add that to the committee reports. At the end, a Section E, Community Relations Ad-Hoc Update. And you're going to be giving that instead of Dr. Jim.
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Is there any other items? Hearing none. We'll move on to the Crescent Lake School Student Presentation, I believe. Dr. House will take it away. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, you will see a showcase from Invention Convention, which offers our CLS 6th graders an opportunity to really dig into the competency of demonstrate scientific and engineering practices. This competency and the underlying essential standard focus on having students ask questions, design and test solutions, and make and communicate conclusions and adjustments, which is what real-world engineers do. Please join me in welcoming some of Mrs. Cousteau's students as they share their engineering creations.
Hello, school leaders. Thank you for inviting us to share our learning with you. In our 6th grade science class, we have began our engineering studies through a deep dive into the invention process. We started with identifying problems. We brainstormed problems with chores, pets, class time, sports, siblings, and so much more. Next, we each selected one of our problems that we understood and believed we could solve. We spent time working to ideate or think creatively about solutions and to design a product or a prototype. Our greatest steps in the invention process include a cycle of building, testing, and redesigning our prototypes. This is where our failures sometimes left us feeling defeated, and eventually, we worked to create newer, stronger solutions with numerous iterations. Our final stage was a celebration through our invention showcase. Thank you to those of you who were able to attend in person. For the reminder of our 10 minutes, we would like to invite you to walk up to our displays and take a close look. We understand your meeting time is valuable, so we will also leave our displays and prototypes for you to view after your meeting.
If I can just add, just the Invention Convention, this whole process has been like a Crescent Lake tradition, I would say. We had two teachers who came nine years ago, Chrissy Reposa and Kristy Diamond, two classroom teachers who arrived at the same time. And they kind of brought this program with them and started it, but it's been continuing over the years. Again, I think that was nine years ago. And it's just wonderful to see, and it's great for kids to have this experience to create, go through the whole engineering process, create the project, but then also have to do the pitch, and have to put together the written component and the public speaking component. And it's exciting to see students who move on to the next level. We have a state competition coming up, I believe, on March 22nd. And then, we have had students go on to the national competition in the past. I want to say we had a student last year. So, it's very exciting. So, thank you for letting us showcase that time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Superintendent. Excellent. All right, so we'll move on to acceptance of minutes. And our first set of minutes is for February 1st, our school board meeting. So that was our meeting we posted for deliberate session. Are there any edits or anything? I didn't see any. Yes?
Yes, I was not present. Beth?
Are you listed as present? Oh! We made that edit? Okay. We'll make sure that's updated to reflect that.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Beth?
Will the minutes provided by the school -- oh, I'm so sorry. Will the minutes provided by the school district are included on the website later? Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mary. Is there a second?
Okay, I'll put it as before.
Seconded by Dana. And, Dr. Jim, we're voting. We're starting on the minutes again, and you're by yourself in your room?
Yeah.
You answered in the affirmative. Okay. So, motion to accept the minutes of the February 1st school board meeting, made by Mary, seconded by Dana Streeter. And if there's no further discussion, Kathy, who would call the roll, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Should I do Dr. Jim and Guy anywhere?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Both abstained. So, motion passes 7-0, with two extensions. Next are meeting minutes for our February 3rd meeting at Tufton Borough Central School. And I believe all board members were present at that meeting. I would request a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So moved.
Moved by Guy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mary. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathy, who would call the roll?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Here.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
We'll move on to the February 19th Buildings and Maintenance Committee meeting minutes. And in attendance were Tom Bigford, Dr. Jim Manning, Guy Pike, and Jim Pittman. So, if someone who was at that meeting would make a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Guy?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jim Pittman. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yep.
Sorry.
I had a question since I wasn't at that meeting. Am I correct that the district's going to purchase all this? Recommend to the full board that the district purchase all new materials to replace the existing turf field? And I'd like to know if that's going to include the replacement of the existing sand, which most likely has leachate from the humble bed that is seated to it.
The existing sand?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay. I couldn't hear if you said stand or sand.
Sand.
I meant sand. To my understanding, that we were planning on replacing all of it, correct?
There is a recommendation under Building and Maintenance, Dr. Pittman will discuss.
Okay. Later, if you want to. Yeah.
It's hello. Have we got it? Hello? Okay. I will be potentially leaving the meeting early this evening, so it might be before our scheduled report. But just to recommend or to recall what the recommendation was, everything would be removed and replaced with all new materials. So, I'd assume the sand is integral to the pad and everything else up there. So, if I understood the representatives of the company, that would all be taken away and recycled.
I understood that as the spirit of our motion, too, in our last meeting.
Is it possible? Is it? I was noticing that I did see. No. I had it written first. So, yeah, sorry about that. I was looking over Mr. Pittman's copies of the lab report from Peace Labs, and it was included online in our school board portal, but the writing was so teeny-weeny. I was wondering if -- I've already asked Kathy if I could have a couple of copies of the reports for the 17th and the 20th. And I was wondering if any other board members might be interested in copies of those lab reports. It might be nice to, you know, share that with the rest of the board. Just a suggestion.
Paper copy, though, correct?
Well, something other than what's available online, because the writing's so itty-bitty, teeny-weeny.
It is in paper copy, too. Okay.
That's bigger. Yeah, that's bigger than what's online, even doing the --
Yeah, so, yes, definitely sent Kathy, obviously sent email, and anyone else who's interested. They were in your meeting packets. It kind of showed that some of the concerns, that those things didn't test positive. So PFAS and some of those other items.
They're in the meeting packets tonight?
No, no, in our online meeting packet.
Oh, oh, yeah.
That you've cited.
Yeah.
Which we promised we'd provide to board members. So, if you'd like, you know, I guess, a printout, you can request in the S.A., you can print it, you can pick it up there. But, we are on the meeting minutes. So, there is a motion by Guy Pike and a seconded by Jim Pittman for the Buildings and Maintenance Committee meeting minutes of February 19th. Kathy would call the roll for those who are in attendance at that meeting.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Okay. Passes unanimously. Sorry, I was talking now for a second. Next is the manifest approval. Tonight's manifest is in the amount of $5,758,592.98. Is there a motion to accept tonight's manifest as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Guy Pike and seconded by Jim Pittman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Kathy, who would call the roll, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Now, we have public --
What was the amount again? I'm sorry.
The amount was?
$5,700,000.
We are now on to public input. Public input is 15 minutes, three minutes for each individual, unless extended by a vote of the board. I ask that everyone be respectful, direct their comments to the board, no directing their comments to people in the crowd, and unto be, again, polite and respectful. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carolyn Wright, and I am a longtime resident of Wolfborough. I have a daughter who previously graduated Kingswood, and I have another daughter who is in the 11th grade. And my concern that I wanted to bring to the school board this evening is the reassessment pilot plan, excuse me, that has begun in Kingswood High School. On the end of January, parents received communication from the principal on a paragraph of what the reassessment pilot plan was going to be. And this was the first that I, as a parent, had heard of it. And it began the following semester, which was just a few days after the email had come out. My question and my concern for the pilot program is, from what we have learned as parents through the students, is if you are a student and you have projects or assessments, summative assessments, you get below a specific grade pointage, you're able to work with your teacher once you fill out a form, and you can retake that summative exam. But if you receive above that threshold, you do not qualify to do any retaking or redoing of your work. And therefore, you lose out on the opportunity to reassess your schoolwork, where other students will be granted that opportunity to reassess their schoolwork. My concern is why, I understand it's a pilot program, but why was this not communicated to the parents prior to being put into effect? The second thing that is being discussed is the grades, how grading is going to take place in school year 26, 27. We're going to go from a pointed grade, A's, B's, C's, specific numbers, and it's going to be based off of your teacher's assessment of you on a 1 through 4. That wasn't communicated to parents or voted on by parents either. So, at what point are we enabling our children versus allowing them to make the mistake, learn from the mistake, and do better the next time? Because real-world is not going to say, "It's okay that you didn't do your project on time for work, we'll let you do it again." Work is not going to say, you know, "You were supposed to be here at a certain time, you had this project due to be presented to the board, we'll let you do it next week." So, I think we're doing our students a disservice by allowing certain students to redo their work, to learn from it, but other students are not allowed to redo their work and learn from the mistakes they've made. And for any parents who aren't aware, 75 is the magic number, it seems to be. If your student has a test, they get above a 75, you're not allowed to reassess, you're not allowed to retake. But if you get less than a 75, you are allowed to reassess and retake. I think we have enough division in the world today that now we're bringing division into the schools, because if you do poorly, you get to redo it, and if you do well, even if it's a 76, you don't get to do anything. I think that's a really poor message that we're sending our students. And I really, as a parent, am unsatisfied that I was not made aware of any of these changes prior to the implementation. We did receive further communication towards the end of February from the school, that it's elective if your student wants to participate in it. Well, what student who got a 76 wouldn't want to participate in retaking an exam if a student who received a 74 is going to be afforded that opportunity? So, I would like the school board to address why the students are being placed in a match against each other. I would also like the school board to address why parents weren't made aware of this decision prior to its implementation. I do understand the pilot part of this program, but I also don't understand why parents were not given the opportunity to have input prior to it being implemented in schools. It might be elective, but it's electing certain students to do better, and it's letting -- it's electing other students to not have the same opportunity as their peers.
Any other public input?
Hi there, Dana House. Getting over the flu, so I'm over it, but sorry if I'm a little rusty. My husband and I are Wolfborough residents. We have three children, two in the district, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and one future knight, expected to graduate in the class of 2040. So, we're in this for the long haul. I'm here to advocate on behalf of our students and our educators regarding the reassessment plan and the new grading system. I have several concerns about this, one in the substance and one in the process. Substance-wise, I think Carolyn spoke pretty clearly about the 74% threshold, the equity issues that arises. Based on that 74% threshold, some can reassess, some cannot, seems like an arbitrary number. I was told this week that the number was selected in part to ease the burden on our educators. I'm all for easing the burden on our educators, but not when it comes to student outcomes. Additionally, my biggest concern really is with the process by which this plan came to light and how it was rolled out. I think, again, to Carolyn's point earlier, parents didn't learn about any of this until two or three days before the reassessment pilot rolled out. It was a single bullet in a parent-square message that, quite honestly, kind of got lost in the shuffle. There was a lot of other information in that message that was easy to overlook. I think more than that, a bigger concern of mine was when I asked teachers, staff members, administrators, and even school board members what they knew about the reassessment plan pilot. It was almost radio silence. So, I guess I'm here today just to say I hope that we can reconsider the 74% threshold. I think it's really unfair to our students, all academic abilities, to put a number on that. I also think we really need to take a look at our change management processes within the district, how we engage stakeholders, all stakeholders. I, as a parent, am not an expert in curriculum design, development, grading systems. But I am an expert in my own child and my children, and I think that at some point, my voice deserves to be heard within a reasonable amount of time before initiatives are rolled out. And more importantly, I really feel like we need to value the input of our educators and our staff members, and make sure that their voices are actually heard through these processes. And make sure that we are considering, as a school district, their expertise. Our teachers are highly qualified. You have to be certified to become a teacher in the state of New Hampshire. And I really feel like their voices are underserved in a lot of the initiatives in our district. And I'd love to see that change, and our administrators. So, I'm hoping, that's my understanding, that the school board doesn't really have oversight into curriculum. It's not a policy. Therefore, you don't really have much of a say. But I'm hoping that you'd advocate on behalf of our students and teachers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public info?
Hi, Danielle Van Dusen from Oscebee. Excuse me. So, town elections are tomorrow, and I know that the other person vying for the Oscebee school board seat, Robert Bowie, did state publicly that he wasn't seeking the seat. I'm wondering if it's possible for the school board to confirm that he did also send a letter asking to be removed from the race, just for people who may not have heard?
I can't confirm he sent the clerk a letter. She oversees the elections' operations with the moderator. We sought legal counsel, because we had already printed the ballots about whether or not the name need to be removed from the ballot, and legal counsel said no. The name has to remain, even though he has no intent to run. He is still running for another seat in Oscebee, unrelated to our school district, for local Oscebee Budget Committee. So, he seemed to be the only candidate campaigning, and he doesn't seem interested in taking the position. If somehow he were to prevail, we've informed him as to the process to resign, he would need to submit a letter to the board that we would accept. That position would then become open, and then we would seek applications for people to fill that seat for the remainder of the term.
Thank you.
No problem. Is there any additional public info?
Bobby Ben, Wolfborough. First, Ms. House, thank you for stepping up here and for the voices of people who are coming up here lately, the last meeting and this meeting. It's nice to hear that there is direct feedback, and that it's constructive feedback, and that everybody's being very pleasant about it. I know years ago, I started coming to these meetings and almost being a cheerleader for our school system and for our school board. I can tell you that is not why I'm up here this evening, is I actually feel as though this board, last month, on February 3rd, performed a dereliction of duty with that earth-stir-turf field. One side of that field was presented. New Hampshire DES was not brought in to talk about the chemicals on that field. Charlene, thank you tonight for talking about the replacement sand in the meeting in February. The salesman who was presenting to the board with only one bid, because that really was only one bid in front of you with that salesman, he actually said that he was only the salesman for the carpet. However, he did state that, due to one of my questions, that when they remove the field, the underlayer, they were going to put it in a vacuum, it was going to swirl up, and the sand was going back in. The sand with the heavy metals and the arsenic and the PFAS will be going back in, and they will be loose. They will be set into the watershed at a higher rate because of removing this field. I just think at this point that especially, I mean, this hurts my heart, Mary, because I know I met you through water quality and making sure that we're taking care of our water. We have human beings' wells. Our children are going to be breathing that. There are higher lung cancer rates for children who play soccer and play on those fields. It's not a lot to ask before the voters expend almost $1 million on a field to look at what it would be to use other types of carpet or saw or other types of material on that field. To just quickly go back to the microplastics and everything, we know, this is supposed to be the educated board. So, to just -- So to just, it's, I'm very frustrated over this. I've had 30 days to think about the fact that people on this board who voted to test that field made a decision before you even got the test in. And now I'm here tonight, you have the test in. This is a public 91a, I would like to receive a copy of those tests. And I just, my three minutes, thank you.
Be sure to get those results, Bobby. Is there any additional public input?
Hi, Angel Boyser. I'm a resident of Tuckton Borough. I have one daughter in the school district at this time, in the eighth grade at the middle school. I just wanted to remind the board, I was also here a month ago talking about an issue, and at that time I had mentioned that I felt the discipline for anybody using hate speech should be more than, well, a lot more than it was, but mainly when it came to school activities such as dances and athletics. And I know that night I was happy to hear a few board members make comments that they seemed to be in agreement of this and wanted to look at changing it, but that night that could not be done because just the way everything works legally with putting policies in, I don't actually get all that. I just want to remind everyone, I don't want people to forget about that, because my daughter, who most of you saw speak and see how wonderful she is, is about to begin spring sports, where she will be with two of the students that committed some of these racial hatred things to her. And I was hoping, as a mom, she would choose not to, because I don't want her to have to endure that. But she is a very strong child, and she said, "No, I have a right. I love the sport, and I'm going to do it." But she will be there, probably having to pass a baton on a field, on track and field, with some of these students. Sadly, last year for the first term, I coached that team, and I loved it. Exhausting, but so fun, especially as a teacher, to see your kids in a different environment is amazing. And I had a decline doing that this year, just because I think it would be a conflict. I would have to coach some of these students that did this to my daughter. I think it would make them uncomfortable, their parents would be uncomfortable, I would be uncomfortable. And I'm sad about that. I'm sad because of racism that I feel has gone completely unchecked at the middle school is keeping me from coaching not only my own daughter, but many of the other middle school students that I know are looking forward to having me. So I implore to you, please don't let this go. I know that there are long-term plans in place for improving the diversity, but the athletics and the dances, it's just a continuous problem. And again, my daughter's wonderful, she deserves more. She shouldn't have to dance with these kids, she certainly shouldn't have to participate in sports with them. She has done nothing wrong, like ever, she's truly that good. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public input?
I'm Dawn Door from, well, I work here, but I'm from Governor Wentworth Regional Support Staff. And I'm just, I know tomorrow's voting, and I'm just hoping, and our board has worked for the last year, and they are very hard with all these people to get a decent wage and to get some decent benefits. And it will be great, you know, support staff drives your kids to school, they make your lunches, they clean your floors, they are parrots, they work at student support centers, anybody that's not an administrator or a teacher, except people that can't be in the union. So I'm just, I'm just really, I know that being a taxpayer in Wolfboro, I know that we've increased, I mean, we've had a lot of increases in our taxes, but I'm just asking you to please vote yes on Article 5, that would give our support staff a living wage. I don't know if a lot of, you know, a lot of the people, I don't know how many, but I do know at least 50 people that work for the district that have to work second jobs, myself included, to be able to support ourselves. So I hope we have your support in Article Number 5 for support staff. That would be great, thank you.
Is there any other public input? I don't want to rush, because it took some people some time to get up. All right, hearing done, thank you for the very reflective feedback, appreciate it. We'll move on to the student representative report, Jack.
I can hold it right here, okay. Good evening, everybody. I hope you're all adjusted to daylight savings. I still am not, but thankfully I arrived here on time tonight, seven hours late. Sadly, our winter carnival dance was postponed, not once, but twice due to the weather. But as of right now, the dance is scheduled for the 21st of March from 7:00 to 9:30. Hopefully, a tsunami doesn't come through and wreck the town or something, because it's just, it's crazy. But speaking of winter carnival, I can tell you guys that our winter carnival day on Friday before winter break went awesome. The day was filled with fun events, I got all the kids involved, or at least the ones who showed up. And it was a great success, and I hope student council continues this trend for years to come. Into winter sports, the ski team brought home some hardware this year. The girls' team got second place at the state race, and they sent three representatives to the maiden champions. And the boys' team did send one representative as well. But one of the representatives, Ava Waldron, took first place for the girls. So congratulations to her and good work to the ski team. The math team won the Lakes Region Math League this year, and Kingswood's very own Junior Swang was the top scorer in the entire league. So congratulations to math team in the ancient. Sadly, both the girls' and boys' basketball teams were eliminated in the first round of the playoffs this year. And the girls' hockey team, combined with Prospect Mountain, was eliminated in the second round by Concord. However, the boys' ice hockey team is headed to the semifinals this Wednesday against our rivals, Canada. The game will be played at Plymouth State University's hockey rink at 7:30. Good luck, boys hockey, and I hope you guys attend. Spring sports registration is still open, but it closes soon on the 15th. Make sure you sign your kids up for sports right now. Trials for teams will happen shortly after, depending on the sport. Speaking of spring sports, the Kingswood baseball program will be heading to Myrtle Beach on Thursday, April 3rd, and arriving very early in the morning on Monday, April 7th. On behalf of the team, we are very excited and grateful for this opportunity to play baseball down south before most of our competition gets to. Also, this means I'll be nice and tanned for our next meeting. This month, FBLA and Kingswood's robotics team have overnight trips. The robotics team will head to Lewiston, Maine for a competition on the 15th, and FBLA will head to Manchester for their state leadership conference on March 20th. Good luck, FBLA and robotics. Kingswood's theater program will perform She Kills Monsters this Friday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 2:00 PM. You'll be able to purchase tickets if you're at the door. I can't wait to see them perform Breakaway. That is all I have for you tonight. I would like to take a moment to thank you all on behalf of the student body for allowing a voice from inside the school of this prestigious board. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Jack, for your excellent report. Next, we'll move on to the superintendent's report versus the superintendent district update.
Thank you very much, thank you, Jack, and thank you to all the students who presented their inventions this evening, just fantastic. If you can get to the full presentations during the school day, there are four classrooms packed full of inventions, and every student prepares so well, you know, the problem that they're solving, and there's so much thought and frankly, engineering that goes into it. I encourage anyone to attend, thank you. Also, so I have some, I'll just highlight a couple of things, but since this publication, I want to extend a thank you to everyone who pivoted due to our unanticipated early release on Friday. So we, most people are aware, we had power outage impacts our plumbing, it impacts our internet, it impacts obviously the electricity, and we can only hold on for a couple hours. And when we were hearing that, you know, it was going to take several hours and there was no timeline in sight, we had to pivot. And I'll tell you, our Wolfboro schools just took care of it seamlessly. So I want to thank the parrots, the middle school who made sandwiches in the dark, for every school in Wolfboro, because we were determined to feed every student lunch before leaving at noon or 1:00. Thank you to the teachers who somehow kept teaching until noon or 1:00 with kids who are like, "Yes, we're leaving," on a Friday. Thank you to the bus drivers for just adding an extra run in the middle of the day for our Wolfboro kids. So not only did they add the extra run, but they also had to navigate the trees down on roads. And it wasn't just the one that you saw, if you saw the picture of the one culprit that killed the electricity in the whole town. They were all over our roads, so buses, some had to wait, some had to reroute, so they, and huge buses. So thank you, bus drivers. And finally, to parents and families, because, you know, we're saying, "Hey, your kids are coming home early." And so we realize that can be really inconvenient, that you have to change your plans at a moment's notice. So thank you to the whole community, and for the safety of kids, we got it done. So thank you to everyone. Hopefully, we will not have to do that again anytime soon. So just to highlight a few things from my district update, speaking of safety, we will have our Safety and Security Task Force typically meets twice a year, the full task force administration board and fire and police from every town, as well as homeland security. This time, we're meeting in small groups because we're working on reunification plans, and that is regional. So this is ensuring that in the rare event of an emergency evacuation, we'll have clear plans in place to reunite students with their families at designated relocation sites. And there is so much planning that is involved. So we are doing that in having a northern meeting, a Wolfboro meeting, and a southern meeting over the next couple months. And I'll follow up with how that went for the board after those are concluded. I also wanted to also, as others have, point out that tomorrow is voting day. Please get out and vote for those of you who live in the district. And also, that staff will be very busy back here. In the meantime, while kids are at home and families are hopefully voting, our teachers and staff will be in a full day of professional development. That includes 504 training, curriculum and assessment work, suicide prevention training, various small group sessions. So we're happy that we have that time. And then finally, as far as strategic plan updates, we are focusing on key areas with the support of Great Schools Partnership. We'll have a presentation on what the Equity Task Force has been working on at the April meeting. So we're looking forward to that, and I hope that those who have questions about that will attend because they've been working very diligently, and that should be some very interesting and helpful information. The parent advisory group is active and busy working on what communication needs in this district, the district-wide communication and engagement strategies that they're working on. So we've had a few meetings, and they're giving us the input. So that's an open meeting, any parent can attend. And I had the opportunity to co-present on our strategic plan dashboard that you can find on our website, the GWRSD.org, under About, under Strategic Plan, there's Dashboard, Live Metrics, super exciting stuff. Encourage people to check it out. We also were really excited about the celebrating support staff video. We have a star among us, Dawn Door was in the video, and so thank you so much for participating. We had others here from Crescent Lake. It was just an Adrian who produced and directed the entire thing back there. What editing, thank you. Glad that wasn't live. So thank you so much, and we hope to do more in the future to celebrate our staff. And that conclude, you can find it on the WCTV YouTube channel. That concludes district updates, happy to take any questions.
Do board members have any questions? Go right ahead.
Do we have dates yet for the Wolfboro reunification meeting? Yes, you can share that with you. I just have Dr. Jim on my phone, so I can't check the calendar.
Do you want to email it to the board?
Yeah, I have to.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Yep, so we'll get an email. Usually Capital Gas will email us about that kind of stuff, and that is when we can participate. It's a great question. Any additional questions? Okay, hearing done. Next, on the superintendent's report is a board vote on the Special Education Trust Fund expenditure. You have a memo in your meeting packet, so I'll let Dr. Kelly give a presentation then.
So this is a motion to hold the hearings. It's so at the hearing, of course, you would vote to actually whether or not to expend from the trust. This is a motion to have the hearing at the next meeting. And the reason we're requesting the hearing is because we have expenditures in four areas that have exceeded what was previously budgeted and approved by taxpayers. Those four areas are contracted services, tuition, equipment, and transportation. So these areas in special education are extremely costly, unanticipated, how not only the cost, but also the need for students after decisions in special education meetings, as well as students who move into the district. So this hearing would allow us to present to the board for your consideration of whether or not to expend from the trust. So we would, we have provided a proposed motion.
Anyone like to make a motion for discussion?
I'd make a motion to hold a public hearing for the Governor Wentworth Regional School District to discuss accessing the Special Education Trust for unanticipated special education costs to the district during the 2024-25 school year.
Second.
Motion by Guy Pike, seconded by Dr. Beth. Is there any further discussion? My, let me make sure I'm not crazy. My only question would be, how much are we looking to expend from the trust, and how much do we have?
I believe it's a little over $200,000. $218,000, and we would need to get into that with you at the hearing as far as how much to expend, because it depends on district funding as well. So we would want to discuss that more carefully with you in the hearing.
Got it, okay. So ultimately, the board will determine how much we expend?
Yes.
Does that, do you have a comment there?
I have a question. Given the fact that we have heard that the Department of Education might potentially be eliminated, and it's my understanding that that's the department that handles the dispersment of special education funding from the federal government, which we all know has never been funded at the level it was promised. Is there any thought, and given what we're hearing from the state about not having an adequate amount of funding from the state level, is there any kind of a ballpark figure of how this will affect our budgets in the future?
It's a very good question. It's, I think it's a valid concern to be watching what's happening nationally with respect to federal funds. IDEA being the special education, it's an entitlement grant, and as you said, to your point, it's never been fully funded. It continues to be woefully underfunded. So as far as affecting budgets in the future, you know, of course, I can't answer that definitively, but I can say that I am concerned about the impact federally on district budgets, on federal grants, whether it's IDEA, Title I, and Title II, looking ahead, but it's hard to say at this time. But it's hard to say at this time.
I think, I think it's important for us to remember that, you know, our administrators will try their best with the resources that we allocate to them and that we get from the federal and the state government. But ultimately, it's this decision of the board to determine, do we need to have a special meeting to appropriate more funds should the federal government come short of its previous obligations? Or should the state government come short of its previous obligations? And so something we'll all have to watch and determine, you know, what we feel comfortable with and what we think the taxpayers would feel comfortable with, should it get to that extreme point? So we'll see. It's been interesting, to say the least, what's been coming out of Washington over the last few months and the impact on funding streams for local governments. So I know I, we regularly get school boards association updates on some of these things and also policy recommendations as executive orders roll out and what we need to do to be reflecting what the expectations are from the federal government. So. Is there any other discussion? I think my only point is, you know, this is a, this is part of the reason why our budget is up more than, you know, we really wanted or anticipated. And there's a, we're seeing an increase in demand in our school district for these special education services and their costs. And it's really squeezing our district budget. So I'm hoping that things will stable out as we get used to this bump of this current, you know, increase that's happened this year. But it's important for us to remember, you know, we have a, we have an ethical, not just, we have a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers, we also have an ethical obligation to these students. And it's important to make sure that we abide by the state and federal laws and provide these children with the services that they and their families deserve. So, you know, hopefully, we can dip into this trust fund in an amount that we're comfortable with. And, you know, hopefully, the amount that we've appropriated in our current budget is going to be sufficient. I'm pretty confident, but obviously, things can change without the federal government has been behaving over the last few months. So we'll keep a close eye on it as a board. There's no other comments? Then Kathy, if you could call the role, please.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Ernie?
Aye.
I'm wondering if the board would be okay if we did the Buildings and Maintenance Report now before my reporting correspondence? Because this is Jim Pittman's last meeting, but he's also the moderator in Effingham. And he has a long evening to get back home and needs to sleep up because he has a long day tomorrow operating the election in Effingham. So if everyone else consents, I'd like for Jim Pittman to do is building the maintenance report because he has to leave at 8:30.
Absolutely.
Excellent. All right, then, Jim, your floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that consideration. And while I have an audience at my disposal, I want to tell everybody I've really enjoyed this, these last six years, serving with all these wonderful people on the board and in the district. It's February, learning opportunity for me. I only hope I gave back as much as I got. Okay. So we had a Building and Maintenance Meeting on February 19th. And I think we already prefaced this earlier in the evening. Among the topics of discussion were the ongoing consideration of the turf field. And we continue to receive more information, not only from our testing labs, but from the various parties who are part of the process leading to replacing the field. As a result of this last meeting, the committee voted to recommend to the full board that the district should consider purchasing all new materials in replacing the existing turf field as opposed to recycling any of the materials back into the, the area that has been pointed out may have been impacted. So I know it's a recommendation to the board. I think we could accept a motion on that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Yeah. So Buildings and Maintenance has recommended a replacement of all the materials of the turf as when we replaced the turf field? Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Guy Pike, seconded by Mary. And Jim, is there any further discussion? Or I don't know if you've had a moment to review some of the testing of the material? If you'd want to maybe discuss that a little bit, just so the board, you know, some of the members of the public are aware.
Well, it could be a very long discussion, but I'll, I'll make it a very short one. Essentially, we did not find through the testing any overwhelming amount of troublesome chemicals, but there were some. And not being an environmental chemist, I have to rely on the testimony of other people. Apparently, it is a unfortunate truth that we live in an environment everywhere, not just on turf fields, but everywhere where we are producing these chemicals, essentially moving to our environment. And by the nature, the physical nature of the turf field, it acts like a comb and takes PFAS chemicals out of the air. So even if we did not put them there in the first place, they actually accumulate as a, apparently a natural process of being there for 10-plus years. That was a pretty big part of our decision to say, well, we do not want to recycle any of that, even if levels are relatively low. We thought the thing would be to have them recycled and removed from our environment. I appreciate the question earlier as to whether that included the sand. I think that the, the statement that the sand would be filtered and put back, if my recollection is correct, was if we had determined that we would recycle those materials, which is not what we're recommending. We are recommending removal. We will not recycle them in place on our field. There are facilities, I believe there's one in Massachusetts, if I remember correctly, that specializes in this. So we're fortunate that there are a few of these places in the country, but this one is close by. So it can be done relatively economically and without transporting these materials, you know, through multiple states. So it seemed to me to be the perfect choice. I share everyone's concerns that we want to make everything as safe as possible. When we looked at alternatives, alternatives also had a lot of concerns. If you build a grass turf field, then you're looking at fertilizers and herbicides and things like that to maintain it. There's ongoing costs, and there are safety considerations in terms of impact injuries. There may be a higher incidence of contact sports resulting in injuries. And there just really are very few alternatives that don't also come with the situation, as I mentioned earlier, that the environment will deposit PFAS on grass as well as artificial turf. So that's some of the, some of the issues that we considered in making this recommendation to the board.
I think that's a good, a good summary. I, I'll be honest, I read the report and it was difficult for me to read just because it's, you know, I'm not a biologist, or as you mentioned, a chemist. So I tried to read it to the best of my ability, but I appreciate that summary. Are there any other comments or questions? Charlene?
I have a specific question. I attended the 12 December 2024 Building and Maintenance Committee meeting. And at that meeting, I specifically asked the athletic director what the cost was going to be to remove and transport the existing materials. And that question hasn't been answered. And I do not recall that it was part of the presentation in Tuckton Borough. That was one of the questions I was going to ask during the discussion, but I was not allowed to ask the question. So I'm asking it now. Since it's been three months since I asked the athletic director to get that information and since he said he would get it for me, I would like to know how much, in other words, part of our, what, $830,000, how much of that is going to be required for the removal, transport, and disposal of the existing materials?
If I remember, during the hearing, they did mention the price of the removal. I could be mistaken, though. But to your point, the rest, does the board want that information? Would you like to know the cost of the disposal?
Yes. True.
Okay. So if we could get that information to the board, Kathy, that'd be good. So we can follow up and get the exact. I thought, I thought I remember them mentioning a breakdown of how much the turf would cost, how much the removal would cost. And I didn't take it specifically in my notes, but I saved the presentation where I thought they might have broken that down, but I could be mistaken, Charlene. So we'll get that information.
Thank you.
Yes, Mary?
No, just to comment, I applaud the time and attention that was put into this by members of the community, the teaching staff, the coaches. I learned a lot, especially in, at the February meeting. The comprehensiveness of it all is exemplary. I think it's no, no doubt, we all care about the safety of all children and anybody who uses the turf field. So I applaud the committee's work. I know you've been on it for a long time, and that's my comment.
Any other comments or questions? Dr. Beth, you have?
And just to your question, Charlene, I, I would like to know the final budget number. But Kathy, when we spoke about this during the hearing, you noted that the, the $830,000 that was appropriated was enough to cover it, even if it was a full replace. So we're still good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I wanted.
I remember that too, Dr. Beth. Charlene, you, you rose your hand again?
Yeah, one of, one of the questions I, I wanted to ask at the February 3rd meeting in Tuckton Borough is, has to do with the timing of this. Because at the December 12th Building and Maintenance Committee meeting, the athletic director said that we could get another year or two out of the existing field. And so I guess I'm wondering why the rush to do that now, especially when the decision was made before any of the test results had come in?
Did we have this results?
Yeah, this was the only pressure.
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure.
So tonight, we have a, it's my understanding that we had some test results, but not all of it. So it's true, we did not have all of the test results back. I know that we reviewed some at different Building and Maintenance meetings. But we can get, you know, as you requested, the copies of the test results for you.
Oh, also, I mean, I, I don't know what prompted the athletic director to decide that this year was the best year in determining to replace the turf field. But I can-
That's my question.
Well, and I understand that, but I can speak to, we were presented as a board. We had a public hearing for about two hours. And the biggest driver as to why I thought it's important to have a turf field is many of the concerns raised about the quality of the turf field, whether or not it's soft enough for high impact, if children fall or student athletes fall. And so I think based on a lot of the concerns raised, it makes the most sense to ensure that we have a turf field that's PFAS-free, that's safer for student athletes. And especially if our athletic director and our coaches are coming to us and saying, yeah, this would be a good investment now. And especially considering the school board, for the first time in about 15 years, didn't put forward a warrant article to save for future turf fields. You know, all of a sudden, inflation will catch up and we won't have enough money to replace the turf field. So without future, you know, money being planned to be put ahead to hedge against inflation for a future turf field, and knowing that there are people who want a PFAS-free turf field and want to save the turf field for students, and based on the public feedback and the folks who have to deal with the turf field on a daily basis, I, I felt more than comfortable to, to make that investment on our students and to fulfill the will of the voters who have saved money for 15 years. Jim Pittman?
Yes, hello. My understanding is the triggering event that accelerated the replacement schedule was they had done some G-force testing on the field and found that it was out of compliance with the safe reading for impact. So they recommended that we do it sooner than later because there was an increased chance of injury if we continued to use the field. And it was not going to get any better, you know, as everything starts to wear out. We would expect that those readings would deteriorate even further. So, so in addition to the fact that just general wear and tear, that was really the number one concern, that we decided to move forward with it.
Kathy, you have a comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh-oh. Do you want to use my mic?
Sure. It sounded like there was a squirrel in there. Thank you. As we're talking, I am recalling more information that was shared during the long PowerPoint presentation. But Charlene, to your, to your question, I know there's probably multiple answers to why, but I do remember him saying, the athletic director saying that that every 15-yard line, there's a seam. And he was trying to point it out, which you really couldn't see it very well on the PowerPoint presentation because it was on one of those screens and projected into a large, you know, the cafeteria area. But if you were, you know, looking crisply at it on a TV screen, that those seams were starting to wear. And obviously, we did not want to find ourselves in the same situation as a combined school district turf field in the southern part of the state, which was shut down immediately because of that same issue, the tears, the possibility of tears, the showing of the wear of the seams. If that goes, then they shut, they shut that, that turf field down and they had to replace it immediately. So they lost out on a, on a season of, of a sport. But we didn't want to come to that situation. But there was showing weakness in those seams that were going to go. So they didn't want to take a chance of continuing a whole nother year with those seam issues.
I have one more question.
Go right ahead.
As I recall, the only testing information that we got back in the fall had to, was from the company that's providing the carpet. And I can remember the sales representative for whatever the name of the company is.
Sure.
I don't remember the name of the company. But the sales rep, Josh, I think his name was, made a very, made it very clear that their company does not provide the crumble. And to my knowledge, are we still using tire crumble? Is that what's being anticipated?
No.
Okay.
Apparently, that, I don't know how that got into the conversation. They use rubber that is similar to what is used in tires, but it's not made from recycled tires. And if you think about it for a moment, most tires nowadays have steel belts and things of that nature, which really wouldn't be able to be removed in the process anyways. But, but it is a similar rubber, but it has never existed as a tire prior to using it.
So am I correct that the only testing results that we have from the company is strictly for the carpet? And we have no testing results from the company providing the crumble of whatever it is, rubber that's similar to tire rubber, but not? Because it seems to me that, and this, this, the sales representative was very clear because we were concerned about the new material and how it was manufactured and whether it was cradle-degrade, PFAS and PFOS-free and whatnot. The only testing we've been provided by anyone is just for the carpet? Have we, have, do we even know the name of the company that's providing the crumble? And do, can we find out if their crumble meets the criteria for non-detectable levels? Because I don't think we have. I think the original testing, as I recall, was strictly for the carpet. And now perhaps, is it the same company that's providing the carpet? And now perhaps is it the same company that's providing the carpet that's also going to provide the padding, the additional padding? I just, I, I think that we should know that all of the, all of the components that are being provided for our children to use are, have been tested. And to my knowledge, we don't have any kind of test results on any kind of underlayment or crumble. It's strictly for the carpet.
That wasn't my understanding? Jim, you would like to get a comment?
What, what was your understanding?
I'll let Jim speak first, it looks like he-
I'm pretty sure that when they do test sampling, they take sort of like a core sample where it includes that crumble as well as the top coat. And, you know, it's, it's a complete assembly essentially. You don't have any divider between the top and the, and the crumble type material underneath. So, so they coexist in the same environment, and I believe that all that material is part of the sample. I might be wrong, but that was my understanding.
Dr. Beth?
Okay. I looked at the, I'm not a chemist either, but I did look at the testing front piece, and I think there's just two, there's a, we're conflating two issues. So Charlene, you're, you're saying that the initial testing that we received in, back in the fall, which was on the new material that would be installed in the field, which is the carpet, that is PFOS-free. And then, Jim, you're talking about the testing that was done on our field, which was core sample, included both sand fiber and whatever else is down there. And that, that was a comprehensive test. So we had all of the stuff in our field tested, and we know that what's going into the field now, the new carpet, will be PFOS-free, but we don't have any assurance on that for crumble or sand, although I imagine that's doable.
I believe that is correct. We have no information regarding any kind of testing from the company that is providing the crumble, which the salesperson on the third said was a separate company that they contracted with. And so I think that because this is brought to our attention, the board needs to do its due diligence, and we need to get the information of what company is providing the crumble and any, any other component for which we do not have their proprietary testing results, hopefully from an independent third party. All we have is the guarantee from Shaw on the carpet. And Shaw said, oh, that's, we're not, that's a different company providing the crumble. So it, it's illogical to me that we would not want to make sure that the crumble has also been tested, because we're going to be paying a lot of money to go this route.
Jim Pittman, you have, you have a comment?
Well, I guess, hello?
I guess it depends on what you want to use for assumptions. I'm not likely to think that the manufacturer is going to nefariously sneak in contaminated materials. I don't know what their incentive would be to do that. If they subcontract the manufacturer of the underlayment to another company, it's not because they're shipping it in from some remote Chinese location where they're creating an outlet for PFAS material. I think the reputation of the company would, would stand on if we're replacing everything, and they know our concerns, that they're going to specify material. You know, at some point, you have to have trust in anything you buy, and certainly when we're spending this amount of money, I don't think these people want to get sued by playing some games with us around this. I just, I just think it gets into a case of circular logic about, okay, you said that, so prove that to me, and you said that, now you got to prove that to me. I think we have to take them at their word that they're going to be putting in appropriate materials and are not trying to turn our turf field into a toxic dump.
Is there-
I believe, I believe that trust and verify.
Okay, like the, is there anybody else who has comments?
I think I'm in the middle between Mr. Pittman and Ms. Seidel on this issue. I think that it would be reasonable if we had, there was a subcontractor under the agreement with the, the new company. We asked them to provide information about safety related to the chemical composition of what they're putting in the field. They could probably provide without a lot of duress. That's their primary business. This should be an easy thing, and it would be something that they would probably have on hand already. I'm not advocating for us to test the new in-line again.
Okay, is there any other comments from board members? Yes, Kathy?
Can you call the question and comment?
I just have one last comment before I think we're going to vote.
Oh, great.
I promise, unless, but my only thing is, I, I thought I remembered from the presentation that it was more than just the overlay, but they mentioned that they use PFAS-free materials when installing, but I could, I could be mistaken regarding that. But, um, thank you. So I think, I think the biggest thing to remember is the motion on the floor, and we can have Buildings and Maintenance further review and request testing from whoever is producing the, the crumble aggregate and other materials, and I agree with Dr. Beth, but Kathy, what is the motion on the floor at the moment?
What I have is a motion to replace all materials.
Okay, so the motion is to replace all the materials in the turf field. I think we're ready to vote.
And if I could have the last word, perhaps? The scope of this motion is that, is that if there's a decision made that we are recommending that instead of recycling any of the current materials, we recommend that we would replace all materials. So I think it's important to remember, that's the scope of the motion.
Okay, so we plan on, the motion is we're going to replace all the materials in the turf field, and then Buildings and Maintenance will meet in April, and they can, you know, we can have the administration request that information from Shaw to see if they have the testing, and have Building and Maintenance review that and bring that to our, I would probably guess, our May meeting. All right. Kathy, if you could call the roll once you're ready?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
No.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Excellent. Do you have anything else?
Well, let me continue my, the rest of my report.
Oh.
I know it seems unfair, you spent the evening talking about turf field, but there are a couple other quick things during the Building and Maintenance. It was reported that the OSIP, get the lead out process has been completed, and they're beginning the process in New Durham, and that they've identified extremely local issues, and happy to hear that in New Durham, they're, they're really putting a lot of effort into finding the last problem in, in any of the plumbing there. We also found out that the HVAC systems that were installed this last year as part of the ESSER funds are working well, but they did troubleshoot a couple of units that they found extreme cold, presented a few unanticipated quirks, and so they were able to fix that. So that was a good fix while still under warranty. Next meeting is scheduled for April 16th at 2:00 PM. That may change, perhaps the composition of the committee will, will initiate a change. That is my report, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jim Pittman.
And I'm going to run away now.
I think the first part of my chairperson's report is to thank you for your service to our school district. Well, now you can see yourself out. No, but really, Jim, thank you so much for your ser-, I mean, you've been on the board now six years?
Six years.
Six years, so Jim, Jim has dedicated himself to the board for six years and has been a very positive influence on the district and education of Governor Wentworth, so. Thank you, Jim, and have a great election day tomorrow, Mr. Moderator.
All right, and don't forget to vote, very important.
We also have another board member, who it's his last meeting, former support staff member, I remember him when I was at Kingswood, Dana Streeter. Dana, thank you so much for your service. Some other correspondence, I shared some expressions of sympathy on behalf of the board to a food service worker on unexpected death in their family. I received an email from Mr. Warren Muir, if you, anyone knows him. He is an award-winning EPA scientist who's lived in Woolbrook for a very long time, but I thought he had a great recommendation for, you'll see in our meeting packets, the, the voting information that's sent, and he said, next year, you should list all the schools on the front of the voting information packet. He said, he's amazed how many people don't realize that we have eight schools that we're responsible for providing funding and services to. So I thought that was a good recommendation, because, you know, there are a lot of newer residents in our area, and they probably don't know that their school portion of their property taxes going towards a elementary school that might be 30 minutes from them, so might be some information. I know getting kind of cluttered as it is, but maybe we could include that.
You got to keep your name tag, Jim.
Yeah, you should get the keep your name tag. We're guessing there won't be another Jim Pittman who will be from Effingham, and take your seat, and we're assuming you're not going to run again.
It's Stockholm.
Well, don't I get to keep the names?
Kathy, Kathy, Caroline's suggesting you give him the whole thing with the stamp.
I'm planning on it, I'm not, I'm not.
Okay.
Excellent. I also want to put in a plug for Article 5, our support staff collective bargaining agreement, as with QUOT's collective bargaining agreement, all the other warrants, all the other articles on our warrant. I hope everyone gets out to vote, it's really important. I know this budget's up more than usual this year. Our variance, though, compared to our, our default budget is very minimal. A lot of these costs are fixed, and as I mentioned earlier, we have, we have an ethical and producer responsibility to these students that we have mandated service that we have to provide, services that we have to provide. I also would encourage some of the folks who came and provided very constructive, positive feedback to, to try to reach out to the SAU office, try to schedule a meeting with the curriculum coordinator and to discuss more. I appreciate when people come to the board and they're, they have very valid concerns, they're passionate, and they're constructive, and they, you know, they, they want to affect positive change, and that's been good, because in my time in the board, not every bit of public input has always been, I have, you know, an issue and I'd like to see this type of solution, so being solution space is always a benefit. And with that, that concludes my chairperson's report. Next, we move on to the committee reports, and we'll start with academic affairs. We have a bunch of policies up for second read.
Thank you, Brody. Is this on? It's got lights?
I think you still got to click it, you got to get it blue.
I have to get a blue light, okay, great. Oh, by the way, speaking of colors of lights, red lights for outside are much more friendly to wildlife, so if anyone needs to replace their outdoor lights, even with the negative connotation from centuries past, red lights are much better for our insects and our owls and flying squirrels and whatnot. So moving right along, you have in your packet the policies that are up for second read tonight, which means this is the chance to discuss any revisions or otherwise changes you would like to see over and above what the committee has already decided on. So does anyone have anything under the recommended for adoption, JRA, student records and access? Hearing none. Let's move on to number two, recommended for reaffirmation, second read. We have a number of- We're not going to just vote as a block?
That's the first block.
Okay, we have to vote on one policy. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion to approve JRA as presented by academic affairs. Kathy, you want to call the roll, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim, Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Okay, moving to number two, we have recommended for reaffirmation, second read. EBCA, crisis prevention and emergency response plan. IPEA, classification as an 11th grader. IL, evaluation of curricular programs. JFA residency. JFAA, admission of resident students. JFABB, foreign exchange students. JG, assignment of students to classes and grade levels. JJID, student physicals for school athletics. And JL CJ, concussions and head injuries. Did anyone have any suggested revisions?
I'll make a motion that we accept the policies as presented by the academic affairs committee. For, what is this one? For reaffirmation.
Yes.
Second.
So would you call the roll, Kathy?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Okay, the next group, recommended for revision, second read. We have a whole slew of these, and since these agendas are printed on the website, I'm going to spare you all reading through all of these different policies. So did anyone have any suggested revisions for the policies that have been recommended for revision? Yes, Dr. Beth?
I have a few recommendations for JICK. So if you'd like to turn with me to page three of that.
Okay, JICK.
Yeah, and first I'd like to address Section V, disciplinary consequences for violation of this policy. And my recommendation would be to add to this section a paragraph that reads as follows. In the events of bullying connected to, connected to, connected to protected characteristics, and particularly in the case of repeat offense, the board encourages utilizing the full scope of interventions and available reprisals.
Could you just tell me where you are?
Yep, I'm in disciplinary consequences for violation of this policy, which is Section V or five, under JICK.
And I can read that again if you'd like to hear it.
Yeah, I would just, if you could read it again and then explain the intent.
Kathy, I can send it to you if you want, there. The proposed addition is, in the events of bullying connected to protected characteristics, and particularly in the case of repeat offense, the board encourages utilizing the full scope of interventions and available reprisals. And so I, given the public input that we received at the last board meeting, given the repeat offenses particularly related to bullying in light of protected characteristics like race, gender, and other characteristics, I felt that it was important for the board to recognize that in some cases, we wanted to ensure that the SAU knew that it had the ability to reprimand under the full scope of available punishments for that kind of repeat behavior.
I'll, I'll second your amendment.
Thank you. I have a few other ones, do you want to keep them?
Is this on just this policy, or?
This is for JICK, which is specific to bullying.
Right, right.
I think it might make sense, because we don't always have the provision in front of us to go amend and buy and then vote. What do you think, Charlene?
Well-
We might not, we might not all agree on every amendment, so.
Right, I'm just trying to figure out the- Yeah, I should send it back to you. Should we send it back to the committee? Should we have other reservations with respect to his meeting on, the meeting numbers? Oh, okay.
So Dr. Eric Killian said that you guys have a meeting on Thursday, and they had several recommendations on policies for hate speech and bullying. So I'm wondering, maybe we adopt this policy now and then, you know, at our April meeting, maybe we even suspend the rules and move a policy forward that's vetted by the academic affairs committee up to the board. I mean, I like, I like that first amendment that you brought for the first edit, but maybe it makes sense for a comprehensive review as a committee.
We could also, we could also add that paragraph now, we could vote to add that paragraph now, and then reopen this at our, at our meeting on Thursday, which by the way, all of our district meetings, our committee meetings are open to the public, and academic affairs is going to be this Thursday at 4:30 at the SAU office, and at that time, we will be getting, hold on, let me just pull it back, sort of, to speak. At that time, on our agenda, which, which I would...
Could you speak to the mic, Charlene?
I'm sorry.
At that time, on our, our agenda is, we're gonna be, we're gonna have a presentation to our committee about the KRHS reassessment in grade scale, and based on public input, I think that, you know, that would be a very helpful meeting for members, interested members of the public to include. So now, what are we gonna do about this current amendment? Are we going to go ahead and accept it, which I think sounds reasonable?
I like the idea of accepting the amendment and then we'll adopt, I mean personally, accept the amendment, adopt the bulk policies, and then know that academic affairs is gonna bring forward, and we can even suspend the rules at our next meeting to bring forward a comprehensive, you know, several comprehensive edits, but I like the idea of making sure that that language is in there, and I think that's very important language, based on the input we've received at our last two meetings.
Do you want to weigh in, Heather?
I just wanted to mention, I think any way that you do it is fine, I just, this particular policy is prescribed by law very specifically, so I wonder if the committee might want to talk about putting your recommendation in another policy in the discipline or other considerations, just about.
Are we reviewing a policy on discipline on Thursday?
Yes.
Yes. Request by Tom to bring two forward.
Okay, I mean...
Would we get in trouble if we incorporated this language? I mean, you said the policy is required, so I'm guessing it's required by state and federal, but does, you know, does this, do you feel this needs to be vetted through the NHSBA?
We could, I think what is presented with the blue, the changes in blue, that is what this supports association is recommending, given changes in the law. So I would just caution this being where any amendments are made, that certainly is your discretion, but we do have other policies that I think it would be perfectly, a good fit as well. So, I'll leave it to you.
It seems to me, and I'm not an auditory learner, so I apologize, because I've listened twice, but it seems to me that what your paragraph accomplishes is putting a little more teeth into what we're able to do. In other words, we're talking about repeat offenses and talking about, you know, more than what we currently do, which I suppose could also include, you know, be losing privileges in a particular club or activity for a couple of weeks.
At the end of the day, that's okay. At the end of the day, nothing in what I suggested changes the scope of authority that the district has over discipline, but it does publicly state that we have this position as a governing body. So it doesn't change anything about the way we behave, but it publicly says how we feel about this specific kind of bullying and the way that we feel discipline should be handled in those cases. So to me, I don't think it should have run afoul of any kind of legal issue, but if you're concerned about it or you're worried that we're gonna get slapped, I wouldn't want to put the district at risk.
I like the wording, I like the wording, and I think that, and I appreciate the rationale, and I do think we need to send a strong message, and I would have no objections to incorporating this language now with the understanding that we can always incorporate the same language in other similar policies that sort of overlap, and we have plenty of those.
Okay, so what I'm, just so I understand, we want to vote on this amendment to this policy, and then we'll accept the bulk of the policies, and then will, academic affairs will amend some other policies that will be brought forward to the board?
Do you want me to hold my, you want me to hold my other comments for some other time?
I mean, not necessarily, I don't know what your comments are, I wouldn't know if they're in order or not, but...
Would the board prefer to hear them all and vote on an amended policy here as one, or, and I could propose all of the amendments together, and if someone didn't like it, they could amend that amendment, is that allowed?
Yeah, we kind of don't do amendments to amendments, but what, my suggestion would be that we, we're looking at this one particular policy, and is that the only suggested revision for this policy?
Yep.
Well, let's vote on that suggested, and then we'll move on to the other ones. So Kathy, could you restate the motion?
Is there a motion?
Oh, there may not be a motion.
I assume that your language was a motion, so I seconded it.
My language is a motion. Second.
It's all Greek to me.
Brody already seconded it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I take Brody's second away from him. Done.
Okay, so we're voting on the revision to JICK that was just read by Dr. Beth, and she'll give you a copy of it. Okay, do you want to call the roll?
Yep, Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Brody?
Aye.
Thank you. I just have one comment before she goes down.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mary.
I don't know where it belongs, among the many district policies that were talked about expectations and whatnot, I've been doing a little diving on what's out there, certainly I'm not ignorant of the consequences of bullying, but I, I would hope that we include, have confidence happening, that we include the language wherever it best belongs about teaching pro-social behavior. Was it saying, the very language though, pro-social?
Do you mind?
We know what it is, we know that it's done, but the language, the very word, pro-social, be in, in it.
Yeah, I think Dr. Eric Killian has a comment on that.
So, according to the law, we do have to follow graduated discipline, so we have to, you know, start small and move up, that's part of the, kind of, recent disciplinary ruling.
JICD.
JICD, okay. And then, as far as, I forgot what the other question that you had, oh, pro-social, so, and we also have to follow restorative practices, so that's part of the strategic plan that we have training on, so this is all part of, it's also going to be included in the equity plan, looking at the whole discipline policy. So, more information to come on all of that.
I wonder, I wonder, after some of the presentations and the recommendations from the administrators at the academic affairs committee, if it might change some of the recommendations or how they're worded for future policies or even for these current policies. Again, not opposed to amending these policies, I just, you know, that's the only thing, is I don't want to double efforts, especially if there hasn't been a meeting, and the administration has to implement these policies, it's always important that we receive the feedback from those who have to implement, have to carry out these policies, so that's my only, not hesitation, but my only comment is making, ensuring that we get that, that comprehensive feedback, and the committee is working with the administrators towards that goal.
My feeling is that this is, that the changes that have been suggested by the SAU, of course, I think my changes are great too, because they're mine, I think that this is a good policy as it's currently presented, and we should have it on the books, and if additional information from the presentation in the future were to make the academic affairs committee feel that we should bring forward the policy again for the full board, then we, we would absolutely do that, but at least we would have this updated in a state of compliance with the law, and, you know, in a fairly good way, I mean, better than it has been, certainly wouldn't want to not go through reaffirmation tonight. You know, I, I would want to move this policy forward tonight and potentially bring it forward again in the future if the committee felt that it needed to be readdressed to the full board.
Yeah, I think, I think also there might be, because there are sometimes policies from NHSBA that aren't required or recommended, they're optional, so I wonder if there are optional policies that might be comprehensive that address many of the current concerns that have been raised at the last two meetings, not, you know, I haven't gone through the policy handbook to see...
Maybe, this one is required, so we definitely have to include it.
Yeah, no, no, so, I'm not saying we should, we should definitely move this policy forward, and, you know, we all just support your edit, I just wonder how many of these edits, instead of editing some of these recommended policies that have been legally vetted, really it should be like a standalone policy, or there might be a better place that NHSBA recommends. Again, I'm not opposed to making, you know, making edits tonight, but I wonder if it would be more efficient, more effective.
I think that we need to go ahead, because this is such an important issue right now, it's been brought, brought forward by the public, I think that we need to go ahead and make all the suggested edits, if everyone agrees with Dr. Beth's other edits, so that we have this on the books with the opportunity to revisit it at the committee level if, if there's an interest in, in having anyone from the administrative team weigh in, guidance counselors, you know, what have you. So what's your next suggested edit?
In the second, in the next section six, distribution and notice of this policy at the end, it's, there's a paragraph that currently raises superintendent and they authorize the incorporation of student anti-bullying and anti-cyberbullying training and education to the district's curriculum, but shall not be required to do so. And I, I think that's, that's fine as is, the last paragraph, just before the parents and guardians section, in the middle of six on page three of nine. And what I would add to that paragraph would be, "Such training will include developmentally appropriate, specific information about protected characteristics, increasing severity of bullying incidents."
This is in addition to the one that says the superintendent may authorize?
Right.
Could you read that again?
Yes. So what I would add to that paragraph is, "Such training will include developmentally appropriate, specific information about protected characteristics, increasing severity of bullying incidents." So that, when you do something, if you're bullying someone, and your bullying is because of a protected characteristic like someone's race or gender, et cetera, that's worse than if you call them a dumb-dumb head.
Yep.
Right.
I'm, I'm wondering, I like that language, I'm wondering if we should have a period after curriculum and delete but shall not be required to do so.
Well, I'm okay with Caroline not having to, I'll leave that to you, I'm not suggesting that edit. I think she would edit it. I don't know if that curriculum says.
Would you like to comment to that?
It, it doesn't necessarily say that it does, my reading of the sentence is, "The superintendent may authorize the incorporation of student anti-bullying and anti-cyberbullying training and education into the district's curriculum." Says you may authorize the incorporation, but it, it doesn't say that it has to already be in place, I just, it, it says may, which isn't the same as shall or will, and I just think adding at the end, but shall not be required to do so is redundant, because the verb, you know, we've already used, may authorize.
Because of the funding, so, it's, that would be an unfunded mandate, so I think that's why they included that last piece, excuse me. The other piece I just wanted to make sure the board is aware, is that sometimes there is hate speech that happens that isn't necessary, necessarily bullying, ironic as it may sound, it may be a one-off comment, and we still want to hold kids accountable, whether it's a one-off comment or actually fitting the definition of bullying. So fitting the definition of bullying is, there's a power differential, there's repeated offenses, there's pre-planning, it's bullying, there's an investigation that we're required to do. With some of the comments that we are hearing from some students, particularly at the middle school, it can be the first time they ever did it and the last. And that is still something that we are investigating and not tolerating at all. So, I just want to make sure I bring this up, because, you know, when we add this to a bullying policy, or when we're saying bullying, then it would have to fit the definition of bullying. So that's very specific as far as what that means for us, and we will have additional recommendations for, for the committee on Thursday.
Thank you, I, I, I hear you, Dr. Killian, and I don't think that the suggestions I'm making tonight are in any way comprehensive or completely deal with the problem, but of course, when it rises to this level, when it's this severe, I want it to be clear where we stand as a, as a governing body on these issues, because this is, this is the point of intentionality that I think needs to really be addressed. I applaud you for dealing with it in one-off situations, or in, in situations where children maybe don't realize the impact of their words or their actions.
Could you read your sentence again, please?
Sure. "Such training will include developmentally appropriate, specific information about protected characteristics, increasing severity of bullying incidents."
Where did you want to put it?
Right, yeah, I read it, yeah.
Does anyone have any objections to that language?
I don't, I think it's fine.
Okay, Kathy, you want to call for, do we have a motion for that?
My language is my motion.
Yes, your language is your motion, and Mary seconded, okay, Kathy?
Who did the first? Beth? Yeah. Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Next.
Last one, in the appeal section, I actually...
Where is that?
That is on page eight of nine, in the same policy.
Thank you.
It's under section fifteen.
Good.
There are some crossed-out paragraphs, and then there are four paragraphs in blue, so in the second one...
Second blue paragraph?
Yes.
Okay.
Where it says, like, the process, it says, "In the best interest of family, students' district, these matters be promptly resolved," that paragraph, so at the end of that, I would just like to suggest that we add, "Such decision shall include instruction for appeal."
Okay, "Such..."
Is this the first or the second paragraph?
Second.
Okay, after, "The superintendent shall issue their decision," writing, "Such..." I missed the rest, sorry.
"Such decision shall include instruction for appeal."
Gotcha, okay.
And the reason for that is simply, if a family really feels that they want to appeal the decision, I, I want them to understand how that process works, how to do it.
I'll, I'll second that, I mean, to Dr. Eric Killian's point, she does that, so... are my, what are my family's, my child's rights during this process or under this policy and how we govern the district? So I think that's more than reasonable.
Okay, so everybody's clear on that language?
My language is my motion.
Yes. Brody, you seconded?
Yes, I seconded.
Kathy?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
I assume you want a motion to move these, so sorry, to, to approve these recommended revisions as amended?
Um.
Unless there's additional edits, but.
You're talking about, you're not talking about what we just worked on, J I C K. You're talking about as a block.
Yeah.
That's, that would be my plan. Does anyone else have anything they would like to suggest for edits to any other of the policies that are up for revision? Hearing none? Kathy?
I'm sorry, who was the first and the second?
I made the motion. I don't know, does someone want to second my motion? Seconded by Dr. Beth.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
And last but not least, we have a small block of four policies that are recommended for withdrawal and the reasons for withdrawal are on the actual policies so that if anyone wants to go to our website and find out why they were withdrawn, they'll be able to do that. And thank you, everyone, Kathy and Heather, for making sure that's happening for us now. The four policies recommended for withdrawal are IMB, controversial issues, JEA, compulsory attendance age, JGA, student electronic communications, and JJG, non-school sponsored contests for students. Did anyone have any revisions in that group? Dr. Beth?
I don't have revisions, I just have a comment. In the last board meeting, I think, I mentioned my concern about the messaging related to the removal of the controversial issues policy and that we support academic inquiry in our district and we want students to have meaty conversations about important topics in the world. And I just wanted to know if maybe we would discuss something in the next academic affairs committee meeting related to a potential replacement that's more in line with the law and district philosophy. Yes, I'll sort of think of it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, the recommendations for withdrawal.
Second.
I have no further comments.
Kathy?
Seconded by Dr. Beth.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
I mean, aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
And that concludes your report, Charlene?
It does, thank you.
Thank you so much. Buildings and maintenance, we already did that. Jim gave us a report and we had a vote on replacing all the materials of turf field. Next is the finance committee report. Tomorrow's the day. Get out in a boat, hope everyone supports the budget. You know, I, I wrote a letter in the newspaper, they limited how many words I could be even though I was running a post because they imposed a word limit on every candidate, even those who were running a post, but I really want to stress, the budget is not mere numbers on a ledger, it's a reflection of our district's values and our commitment to our students. There is reasoning behind the budget that we proposed. We went through three hearings on the finance committee level, we had two public hearings on the board level. This board had ample opportunity to amend the budget if it so chose and board, you know, the majority supported the budget and what's on the warrant. And then we had a robust deliberative session where we discussed the budget and the majority of people there supported it as written. So I hope the residents who vote the second session of town meeting tomorrow are as supportive as everyone has been thus far during the process, every stakeholder, but it's ultimately the voters who decide what they're comfortable with appropriating, but I hope that they're comfortable with our current budget. Next is human resources. Jim, you don't have any updates, do you?
No, just getting on the book.
Yep, support the GUAD agreement, support the GUSSA agreement. And lastly is our community, community relations ad hoc committee update. And Dr. Jim, he is remote, so Dr. Beth has promised to fill in and provide an update. And I think we have a recommended motion tonight. Excellent.
The ad hoc. The ad hoc communications committee met on February 24th to discuss next steps as charged by the board. We reiterate to the board that per their prior authorization, academic affairs will review the proposal to reinstate the community relations committee as part of the board's overall committee structure, which is scheduled for review at their next meeting on Thursday. Additionally, the ad hoc committee discussed facilitating a gathering of leadership of the parent-teacher organizations throughout the district at a centralized location this spring to encourage the sharing of ideas and deepening of community ties. Such events were previously held when the community relations committee was part of the overall board structure and were widely viewed as productive, positive efforts. We request that the board authorize the ad hoc committee to work with the SAU to plan a PTO summit event and to provide a budget for the event on a date to be determined this spring based on SAU and PTO availability. Current discussions have included suggestions such as an early morning coffee meeting or an after-school session with light refreshments, preferably at the LRTC based on its availability also. If the board is amenable, we would be pleased to see the following suggestive motion, namely, I motion that the board authorize the ad hoc community relations committee to work with the SAU to organize an event to gather members of the district's PTOs this spring and furthermore, I authorize the SAU to expend unbudgeted funds for this effort.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I'll say I've been very happy that, that we after, you know, the beginning, after we reorganized, have worked towards this community relations committee. It's something that Dr. Jim and I really discussed as a priority, as something that needs to be moved forward in our community and especially with some of the feedback that we've received over the last few years. Reinvigorating this community, community relations committee is going to, going to be a net benefit not just to our ability to efficiently and effectively govern, but also to, to work with, with parents and other stakeholders in the school district and to ensure that we're hearing their needs and meeting them where they're at. So I'm, I'm very excited that we as a board are making a deep commitment to this and I'm very happy with the ad hoc committee's recommendations and the work that you guys have done. I really appreciate it.
Pleasure.
Is there any other discussion?
I love the PTO summit, that's brilliant.
Yeah. I know Dr. Jim would be very happy, was very disappointed when the board got rid of this committee and he's going to be very excited that we're bringing it back. Right, Dr. Jim?
Being Dr. Beth and Beth, it's a pretty good deal.
I agree. Kathy, if you could call the roll once you're ready, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
We are now on to, is that the end of the report?
It is.
Excellent. We are now on to closing activities, advanced planning. Tomorrow, no school in-service staff and district voting. Get out and vote. We've sent out voting information to every resident of the district and where you can vote, so definitely use that as a frame of reference. The 13th, as mentioned, of this month, academic affairs meeting, 4:30 PM at the SAU office. Some pertinent things that members of the committee have mentioned tonight will be discussed there and additional policy updates I've discussed. And then on the 7th of April is our school board meeting at Carpenter School. And I encourage anyone to please see the GWRSD.org backslash calendar for the most current event details because obviously the date of anything is subject to change in accordance with our SA91-A. And with that, I will open up our second public input session. Again, 15 minutes, three minutes for individuals unless extended by a vote of the board, as everyone be respectful. Director comments to the board, I'll direct that others in the crowd, and thank you.
Just real quick, I wanted to thank you all very much for the thoughtful discussion on the racism and bullying in our schools. I was sitting next to Angel during part of this meeting and I think she'll be pleased to know that there was a lot of thought put into your policy reviews. I do have to say though, we've had policies in place for a long time. They're not perfect and I'm grateful for the work that you all are doing to improve them, but why weren't they adhered to in this instance and in others? Who's ultimately responsible for that and adherence to those policies and how do we hold them accountable? I myself am a victim of hate crimes as a child in seventh and eighth grade, not here. I lived in Pennsylvania at the time. No one was there to defend me. No one stood up for me. No one in the school did anything to support me during that time. And I'm 47 and I carry it with me today. And when I heard the story of Angel's children's, it literally broke my heart because I can fast forward to 47-year-old them. Little bit different, I can hide behind my whiteness, it was, you know, which I have for most of my life. But I really feel like we must do more than write policies. We have to make sure that they're adhered to in our schools and that if they are not, people are being held accountable. Not the children, but the grownups who are there to support them and to help them grow into adults. So thank you for your efforts, but we need to do more.
Thank you. Any additional public input?
Bobby Benman, again, following a great comment. I just want to point out stopbullying.gov and that it does not have to be called bullying to act on the first time. It can be called according to the government. Bullying, hazing, teasing, schools are obligated by these laws to address the conduct when it meets all the three criteria below it is. And I'll just surmise, paraphrase it a little bit. Unwelcome and objective offensive such as derogatory language, intimidation, threats, physical contact or physical violence, creates a hostile environment at school that is, it is sufficiently serious that it interferes or limits a student's ability to participate in or benefit from services, activities, or opportunities offered by a school. I listened to a mother tonight say that her child isn't being encouraged to not participate in a program due to another, other children. And I'm just going to say this as a mom of a child who is in this school, and I don't know where the parents are in this, because when my own child participated in an activity like this, but it was based on sexual harassment towards a little girl, it was met with the most extreme action immediately and he learned on that time. He was removed from unicycling, he was removed from recess. That was me as a parent saying, remove my child, he needs to learn a lesson. And I don't know why the parents aren't stepping up in all this and removing their children from these, but if the parents don't do it, it, it is federal law that we can do it. So I, I think that slowly escalated to remove the children. I, I think with the racism and, and with misogyny, sexual harassment or anything else, I think it is our duty to teach on the first time. Just wanted to get that out. I do have a question because it falls directly with the budget and I think it might change the way many of us could vote on the budget. One is your hearing to expend at, at your next meeting when you set that forth. If the budget fails, there's about 600, it was like 682,000 if I remember correctly, that is a shortfall on the special education from the state. If our budget were to fail and we wouldn't have that in there and we would, we would be going on to the default budget, would we have to expend those $680,000 additionally from this $218,000 you were asking for, for that hearing?
So the $218,000, that's how much is in the trust fund. We haven't chosen how much to expend from the trust fund.
So we only have $218,000?
We only have $218,000.
Okay, I understand.
And that is for this fiscal year. So our fiscal year ends June 30th and the next fiscal year starts July 1st. We'll know how much money the taxpayers will appropriate to us based on how they vote tomorrow. They'll either, you know, say no and we'll go into a default budget, which will be $850,000 less than we want the taxpayers to appropriate in our proposed budget. We will have the funds to fulfill those contractual obligations, it just means we're going to have to find, as you mentioned, that 650,000, that's not, you know, loss of state aid, that is, that is, you know, contractual obligations where we'll have to cost shift. We'll have to find other places in our budget that will have to be reduced to make up for that, for that difference. So essentially voting down the budget will force us to have to take money from other places in our budget and appropriate it towards those contractual services, most of them being at a district or transportation costs related to special education. So it'll take what already is a tight budget, we've taken a lot of money from other lines to help fund those, those soon to be, those soon to be contractual obligations, we'll have to further do that. And we, we said as a committee and already made, I would say, some significant reductions to some of the general lines, especially things that have to do with resources in the classroom. And I hope the taxpayers understand that by voting down the current budget, it's really just sacrificing the resources that we'll have in the classroom for general education.
And again, it's 852,000 or something like that, the difference?
That's the difference between our default.
And 680, around 680 is for special education.
Probably more like 650, but yeah, I mean.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Or special education or related costs.
Okay. And then I, I wanted to encourage you just because I think it should be a unanimous vote for removing all of the materials from the turf field. I would encourage you to open that amendment that was up on the floor, someone from the winning side, and just maybe add into it that it's not just the removal of the materials, but that the new materials, all of them that are going in, do not have any of the toxic chemicals, the PFAS, the arsenic, the, because I think if you open up that amendment and that's a little bit stronger, then I know that I'm going to praise you for that. I know this has been a long haul, I've been fighting this for 15 years, 13 years, whatever. And I, I think it's great, I know the turf field needs to be replaced, but I think it should be done in a way that we move forward with the dialogue, making sure it's in writing.
It could be, we have another vote.
Anything else?
That would require a motion to be considered by someone who voted in favor.
In affirmative.
Yes.
Brody, am I allowed to make a comment?
Yes.
Public input, go right ahead. Yep, you're free. You're, you're a resident.
I'm the cameraman, I don't know. My name is Adrian Champagne, I'm a Tuxton Borough resident, I used to go to Crescent Lake School. Just talking about the bullying, I was bullied from grade, first grade to all the way until I graduated high school. And I was often pushed away by principals, by teachers, by people who were supposed to help me. I went to everyone that I was told that I needed to. In the end, really, my parents were the only ones who always stood up for me. And hearing the stories that I've heard, attending all these meetings, it is very difficult to rely on just procedures and talks to people because that doesn't always get through to them. So I hear what everyone has been saying of, there needs to be something more and just protect the, the kids who want to come to school, to have a safe place. And I know I loved school until I was harassed for a week straight and was told by the principal that it was a misunderstanding on my end and none of it mattered. So just something to consider for the kids.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm doing one more. Okay, I'm doing one more on bullying from the other side. Many of you may know that I ended up homeschooling my son. Many of you may know that I ended up homeschooling my son due to the bullying here. One-time incident, came home with seven bruises, a joke, poke me, whatever, but it was a buildup of bullying and it was not handled. And it wasn't handled to the point that my son had to homeschool. Don't make other people remove their children, just deal with this. Thanks.
Is there any additional public input? Seeing none, I would entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Guy Fite, seconded by Mary. I assume there's no additional discussion? So Kathy?
I would like to make one, one point. Years ago, when I was first campaigning for school board, I was asked a question at candidates' night by the then-business manager, Jack Robertson, who subsequently became a wonderful superintendent here for many, many years. And he asked me if my intent were to micromanage as a board member. And my comment, my reply to his question was that there is a fine line between the school board and micromanaging and making sure that their policies are followed. And I have heard and I understand that there is a lack of consistency, there is a failure of the leadership that is required to make sure that our policies are followed. And speaking only for myself as a board member, it is indeed under the board's purview to make sure our policies are followed in whatever way that we can. And I want to thank you for all your comments and encourage anyone who's interested to come to academic affairs on Thursday at 4:30 at the SAU. I think it would be lovely if we had such an outpouring of interest that we had to move to a larger venue. Thank you, that's all I have.
Is there any discussion on adjournment? Kathy, if you could call the roll, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.